This is the regular meeting of the Aurora City Council for July 15, 2015.
Come up to the microphone when your name is called. So the first speaker I have under public invited to be heard is David Gruber.
I am David Gruber, Colonel, United States Air Force, retired. I come to speak to you as a veteran for myself and for all like-minded Auroraans who have served as soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines. On July 12th, a protest was held at the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement Detention Facility under contract to the GEO Group. According to several sources, this protest was partially organized and led by three sitting members of council. At that protest, the flag of the United States was pulled down from a 30-foot pole. Our flag was stomped on and dragged through the dirt. Mass men then attempted to light our flag on fire. They then raised an upside-down caricature of a flag over our council members, and the protesters cheered. That was only the first step. To insult our great state, the flag of Colorado was also pulled down and replaced by the flag of another sovereign nation. The flag of Mexico flew over Colorado, and the protesters cheered. I am deeply saddened by these events. We recently commemorated the birth of our nation and the 50th anniversary of our landing at Normandy. The men and women who sacrificed under our flag for so many years did so to honor their oath to defend the Constitution. This Constitution is the same document that grants your right to defame the flag. But I can tell you this: If this action had taken place against our flag flying in Vietnam, Iraq, Afghanistan, Africa, or anywhere else Americans have been engaged in combat, these brave service members would have given their lives to keep it from happening. Not only did you hurt our citizens, you also hurt our veterans who serve in our city, especially the veterans in the police and fire departments. They were told to stand down as this atrocity occurred. I have already seen backpedaling since our council members have discovered how much they hurt the citizens of Aurora. I can hear arguments saying that even though I gave a speech under the desecrated flag, it was not my doing. To this, I remind you that the mass men who attacked our flag were invited participants. They did not simply show up. Our council members were complicit in this act, and we, the veterans, hold you equally accountable. I lack the words to fully describe how hurtful this action was to our veteran community. While on active duty, I served as a commander of the Honor Guard during funerals at Fort Logan. After giving the order for the 21-gun salute, my troops would carefully remove the flag from the coffin, fold it, and give it to me. I would then kneel in front of a loved one, and following a speech that began with the words "on behalf of a grateful nation," I would present the flag with as much reverence as I could. I suspect some of you will attend a military, police, or firefighter's funeral someday in the future. I charge you with this thought: Imagine the desecrated flag you allowed to fly over your protest was the one given to the family member. Imagine the pain you would see in the loved one's eyes. This is how we veterans feel.
Thank you for your comment. Please take your seats. We're not doing comments, Councilmember Johnston. They're going to be saved for the end. I'm sorry, but we're not doing them now. Councilmember Gruber signed up to speak. And that was the last public invited to be heard item I have, and so...
Mayor, may I say who we're coming with?
Councilmember Johnston, we're not going to open up discussion on Friday night's activities.
I'm not going to say that. I'm not going to say that. But I just, I do want to point out that there have been continual times where Councilmember Gruber will speak to someone speaking at that podium, using the bully pulpit. They cannot respond, but the one time where I'm asking to respond...
Yes, so please save the comments for the end. I have a lot to say about Friday night also. And remember, the rules were written by this city council, and the rules say that speakers have to be in by 7:30, and the rules say that you have to sign up for a speaker under public invited to be heard.
Yes, Mayor.
We're here to hear from the public, not from council members. So unfortunately, somebody's got to run the meeting.
I'm going to very, very respectfully initiate an appeal of your ruling not allowing Councilmember Johnston to respond at this time. By having a colleague be the first speaker, it afforded that speaker a very broad audience. And I'm going, this is not a personal thing, but I'm going to respectfully appeal the ruling of the chair to allow Councilmember Johnston to have the same amount of time to respond. Lastly, having a council member get up at the podium as a member of the public is unprecedented. Not saying it's wrong, but it's unprecedented, and I think we should afford Councilmember Johnston a chance.
No clapping, no clapping. So Councilmember Johnston has, I'm sorry, Councilmember Richardson has asked that the chair be overruled, and that takes a second by another council member, and then a vote of the council. And I would just say that I would ask council to not support that motion. I have a lot to say about what happened Friday night. It was very offensive to me, too. But I'm saving my comments for later, and it'll be recorded, and everybody can see it on TV. But the rules are the rules, and I'm asking that this council not override my decision in this case. So with that, we have a second from Councilmember Hiltz. And does the clerk want us to, are you able to set this up as a vote?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we will be able to set this up as a vote. It's ready to go whenever you are.
Mayor, does this vote get a discussion?
Yes, it is open for, I believe, yes, it's open for discussion. Councilmember Murillo.
I...
But please, please do not go into the incident. Please only discuss the motion on the floor as to why we should or should not allow it.
Sure, I have many feelings and opinions about how events have been characterized regarding last Friday's GEO...
Councilmember Murillo, please speak.
I have not gone into depths, so if you would like to correct what I've said thus far, please do.
You're going into more than you should be going into, but please proceed.
I am phrasing my point. Is that okay, Mayor?
It is not in my opinion.
Thank you for sharing your opinion. I have many feelings, just as Mayor Legere also shared in his comments, that he has many comments and many feelings related to the incidents at the ICE detention facility. I, too, have shared them. I would like to urge my fellow council members to support the appeal of the chair's decision. I think the record needs to be corrected by those who are actually in attendance and not just shared based on Twitter feeds and inaccurate and misinformation that's been spread. I feel that people's personal safety has been at risk, based on, and myself included, based on misinformation and lies that have been put out by Councilmember Gruber. Therefore, I am urging my council fellow council members to support the appeal and allow Councilmember Johnston to correct the record. Thank you.
Councilmember Hiltz.
Thank you. I echo the same concerns to our colleagues who stood. Aurora PDM sure would be happy to share with you the video footage that they have of the incident. So I think that, given the threats and concerns about personal safety and the lies that have been spewed upon this dais today about what happened, needs to be corrected. And given that more than half of this room stood to applaud those falsehoods, I think Councilmember Johnston also deserves the right to correct the record in front of the same people, given the personal safety risks that have stemmed as a result of this and by, and possibly from, people in this room, we don't know. And so I think it's important that that record be corrected, and for our own personal safety, I'm asking our colleagues to allow that record to be corrected. And I urge Councilmember Gruber to sit down with the Aurora Police and actually watch the video footage of that night, because you will see...
Councilmember Hiltz, please stick to the motion.
All right, thank you.
Other comments before we call the question on the motion to override the chair? Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, call for the question. The motion fails on a vote of 6 to 5 with Councilmembers Watson... I'm sorry, yeah, with Councilmembers Watson, Gruber, Roth, Burzens, Bergen, and Legere voting no. Now we'll move on to need Councilmember Hiltz. And the motion carries unanimously. And 17B was moved, and it's already been voted on, and that brings us to reports. And I do have a report to make. So this is where we can talk about Friday night. Sorry for the delay, but this will be my report from the mayor. So what I wanted to say about the incident, or whatever it is you want to call it, about Friday night, first of all, I wanted to say that our police department, I believe they acted properly and in the best interest of public safety. I know that it was posted all over Fox News and other news media with the Mexican flag being raised. But what actually happened on Friday night was a peaceful protest, which is, our country has a long, long history of supporting peaceful protest. And a small group of rogue participants in that group ended up co-opting the effort, and, you know, the perimeter was breached, and the flag was raised or lowered and then raised. I don't hold my council colleagues, their council colleagues here sitting tonight, I don't hold them responsible for that in any way, nor do I hold anybody that was there for the peaceful protest responsible. There were, you know, from reading the paper, I read that one of the primary organizers of this event is a U.S. veteran. There were, and I know there were scores of other people in that audience that were veterans or family members of veterans, and they, too, were offended by this. And I believe that what happened with the flag, the U.S. flag being raised and the Mexican flag being, or the U.S. flag being brought down and the Mexican flag being raised, and the Blue Lives Matter flag being desecrated, I think it seriously, seriously hurt the effort that was being made that night for a peaceful protest. And so what I believe happened last night is that we had activity, I'm sorry, Friday night, activity from a fringe group. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about fringes. You know, the group that chose to do what they did with the U.S. flag, that's, they're on the fringe. We've got, we've got people on both sides of the immigration issue, and there are extremes on both sides. And one of these extreme examples is this flag group that felt that that was a good thing to do for the cause, and we saw the reaction we had. And then there are extremes on the other side. If you look at the immigration issue, we have one extreme that says, "Round them all up and ship them all back to where they came from." And then the other, the other extreme is, "Open the borders and let anybody that comes here be a citizen and give them voting rights." I don't think, I don't think mainstream America would agree with any of those two options on the extremes. But the problem we have in this country is that our Congress, for 25 to 30 years, has failed to address immigration. And the problem is, they just let the fringes drive the discussion. And so I want to give one example of a fringe group member. This is, this is the first email I received on Saturday morning, and it's addressed to the mayor, me. And it says, the subject line is "Flag, You Bastard." And it says, "You are a disgrace to the United States of America. Thanks for showing your two colors, you stinking liberal garbage. Justice would be seeing your family wiped out by the illegals you wish to protect. You are sickening. If you don't love the U.S., leave it, asshole." So that's a fringe. I'm not going to name this person, because I don't want to give them notoriety, but that's an example of the people on the fringe that don't do this country any good. And the problem is, in my opinion, our Congress, for 25 to 30 years, has listened too much to the fringes on both sides. There have been Republican-controlled Congress with Republicans in the White House; there have been Democratic-controlled Congresses with Democrat in the White House, and under none of those situations have they ever addressed immigration reform. And this country, when you talk about rounding them up and shipping them back, this country, for probably 25 years, had a policy of wink, wink, look the other way. If you can get across the border and get to the United States, you can get a job, you can be employed and make a lot of money, and you can get your kids in school, no questions asked, we'll educate your kids. And if you have a child, just go to any hospital, and we'll deliver the baby. And by the way, if you have another child born in the United States, they're a citizen. So that's the wink, wink policy our Congress put in place. And is it any surprise, is it any surprise that people are breaking down the border, trying to get across the border to come here? It's a country that offers just unending opportunities. And the other extreme is, it just, there's no solution here unless Congress acts to address the immigrants that, the folks that came here under the wink, wink policy, and comes up with some type of a system where they're going to say, "If you came here before 2005," or whatever it is, they've got to pick the year. And then they've got to say, "If you came here before that year, you do get the opportunity to get a green card and work your way to become a citizen." Now, the fringe on the right is going to call that, and maybe it's not even the right, it's just the fringe, the anti-immigrant fringe. They're going to say, "That's amnesty. How dare you, how dare you allow amnesty?" Well, we allowed the wink, wink policy. It's a tough issue. Congress needs to deal with it. So this is just, it's very frustrating to me, because our law enforcement has the job of keeping our city safe. And all the critics that said, "How dare they allow that," don't even have any concept of the fact that when you have 1,000 or 2,000 people, 99% of them peaceful, and what, are you going to start lobbing tear gas because someone took a flag down? Yeah, it's a disgrace to the country. But the answer was not to go out and turn that into a mob scene. So it's just very frustrating to me that the Congress of the United States has done nothing on this issue, and we, the city, the local governments, are dealing with the impact of it every single day. And so if Congress wants to fix this thing, they've got to find some guts and deal with the folks that came here under the wink, wink policy and find some path for them. They need to stop the flow from across the border, and then they need to send the message to everybody that our border is not open for anybody to just come in. You've got to come in the right way. And I wish I could say I was confident that Congress was going to do that, but I'm not. And so it's up to us at the local level to deal with it and struggle with it and deal with these outrageous things that happen on both extremes. So I'm going to stop there, but I'm going to reserve my right to say more after everybody else. So we're going to start with Councilmember Watson.
Thank you. I'm going to address the misinformation slander that was presented by Councilmember Gruber in the beginning of the meeting. We participated in Lights for Liberty, which 700 cities throughout the United States participated in. You said that we organized this protest. We did not organize Lights for Liberty, we did not organize the 700 cities, we did not organize the 100. Lights for Liberty is shining light on human rights abuses, period. You said that we spoke under the flag being desecrated. Obviously, you didn't even take time to investigate. That was hundreds of yards out. I didn't even know until well after, none of us did. We were with thousands of people way on the opposite side. So to say that, cue your camera person, have the big production, have your hundreds of people that you got to have, and then put our safety by saying lies. Those were lies. And I don't think it matters if you're connected to the military or not, that you are patriotic, but I will give my stripes that I earned. How dare you talk about giving someone a flag? My dad had military honors during his burial. My mom received that flag. So to say those things, for me to go through five deployments, it is, it doesn't even matter if I went through that or not, to question the patriotism of the three of us, to question, give wrong information in front of hundreds of people, and get your camera person to video it, to have social media, it is beyond unprofessional. I would never do that to you. I would never do that to any of my colleagues. I would hope, as a council, if we had concerns, we would reach out to each other. Bob, Mayor, I appreciate you giving us the benefit of the doubt and knowing that we're part of a peaceful protest, because we've built relationships where we can work together, and you give us that benefit of the doubt. But to do this theatrical performance is uncalled for, and will have major repercussions for us to come. So I think you should apologize for the wrong information that you gave out publicly.
Thank you. I want to address a couple of things. One, I invite all of my colleagues once again, other than Councilmember Bergen, to read the report about this facility that was issued by the Department of Homeland Security's Immigration, Customs, and Enforcement Internal Review, as well as the Inspector General's report. I think, I appreciate Councilmember Watson's attempts at explaining what's happening at this facility, but as many of you know, I've been working on this for seven months. I'm pretty well-versed in what's happening. I'd argue I'm in more contact with ICE than anyone in this room, and have pretty accurate information on what's going on. So for one, on any given day, the facility is made up of 60% asylum seekers. That's people who legally presented themselves at the border. They have not violated anything, they did not cross any borders illegally, they legally presented themselves at the border for asylum. So that's one. The cooperation with Tri-County is voluntary. That is not something that they have previously done, and it's not mumps or measles or something. It is mumps, it is chickenpox, and it is repeated violations of not reporting to the proper health authorities what those communicable diseases are, which is why I'm bringing an ordinance that will require them to report communicable diseases directly to the city, because we have not been previously able to protect our first responders, who then leave the facility and go to a nursing home, or a school, or home to their families unprotected. And so what they're doing now is great, and they're doing vaccines, and that's appreciated and needed, but it's also because they're being watched, and they, that's voluntary. That is not something they're required to do. I wish Councilmember Watson would look up at one point during this entire conversation. Thank you. And then, we also want to talk about what's happening with this facility from a business standpoint. This facility was recommended life safety changes that were structural, and they failed to pull their permits. They also had a recommendation from the police department regarding their security on Friday that they chose to ignore. This is consistently in line with their blatant disregard for human safety at the GEO Group facility here in Aurora. This is not an ICE issue, this is not an immigration issue, that's an issue, too, but this particular issue that we were there to speak on on Friday was about the conditions in this facility, the information of which is coming directly from ICE and the Inspector General themselves. This is not my opinion, this is fact, this is documented, and this is federal. And for Councilmember Gruber to say that we are responsible for the actions of others, I would, I would never hold you responsible personally for the neo-Nazis, the white supremacists that have been coming after us as a result of you reading off what is on Twitter, because what you said is verbatim what the alt-right is saying on Twitter, and they are lies, and I recommend that you sit down with the police department, who was there, and have a conversation, and look at the video footage, and see where we were. We did not trespass. You have to actually trespass across the bridge. I know no one else here is toward the facility, so I won't assume that anyone here knows how the facility works. I have. You have to actually cross over a driving bridge into the parking lot to get up to the front in order to get to the flag. We were completely hundreds of yards away, and for you to sit there, or stand there, I guess, and question our commitment to the military, you know, my dad did almost 30 years, 30 years in the military. He was special forces. I grew up with a father in the military, gone every summer of my childhood. I spent a better part of 10 years not knowing if every explosion killed him, because he was in the Middle East, and we had no idea where he was. I watched the Twin Towers fall while I was processing an 18-year-old kid into the military, picking up the phone and saying, "No, Mom, this is why I'm joining," when I worked at MEPS for the DOD. So for you to sit there and question any of us and our love for this country after we've condemned the desecration of the flag is a disgrace. And frankly, I love this country, and what is happening right now is not part of the country that I love, and I will be darned if I don't, I had to catch myself there, if I don't speak up for that. But what you did and what you said, which is a blatant lie, which you are fully aware of, because you weren't even interested in having a conversation, or perhaps looking at the footage, because that doesn't have, that doesn't fit your narrative. The speech that we gave was to about 400 people who were sitting down on the floor or on the street, holding candles, but that doesn't fit the narrative that you want to tell. So I just, I would never hold you or my colleagues responsible for what the white supremacists and the neo-Nazis and all these people come after us for. And I am really disappointed that the three of us actually pled for the opportunity to say this earlier in front of all these people citing concerns for our safety, and there are people on this council who voted against that. And I hope to God that none of you ever have to look your colleagues in the eye and ask for us to help you with your personal safety, because to have that, to have your colleagues actually say, "No, we're going to ignore your pleas for your personal safety," I don't want to hear anything about how we're not being cooperative, or we're speaking out, or anything, because that right there, that is a basic humanitarian or humanity issue, and frankly, it is, it is abysmal and it is horrific that our colleagues actually looked us in the eye, well, didn't look us in the eye, and said, "We don't care about your personal safety, have a nice day." I hope you never have to go through that situation.
Councilmember Murillo.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for reading your statement. I'd like to address the events and incidents that happened this past Friday as well. As you all know, I was in attendance...
As you all know, I was in attendance, and to clarify if it wasn't already crystal clear, I was not, nor were any of the other council members on this council organizers to this event. We decided to, and I guess I'll speak for myself at this point, I decided to attend in support of our immigrant community, and to speak out against the horrific, horrific conditions that people have experienced in our own city at the private Geo Detention Facility. A person has died, people have not received proper care, and for too long, the finger has been pointed every which way about whose responsibility it is to have oversight. We've had presentation from Tri-County where they confirmed, in fact, that they did not have oversight capacity in this facility on public record. We've gotten mixed messages about who has oversight, because it's a private facility. But then they contract with the federal government, so is it a federal facility? My point being is that there has never been clarity, and the fact that we are seeking basic answers to what that looks like, because we're taking responsibility. It's a federally contracted facility. However, they're in our, our city, and in my ward in particular, and I think it is me being the most patriotic that I could be to stand up for the values of decency and human rights and human respect. And so I think it's really unfortunate that this moment was used for political gain, political expediency, to spread misinformation. In a statement that we jointly released, we condemned the burning of the flag, and we were nowhere near that incident taking place, and I can't speak for everybody who was in attendance. I can only speak for myself and, and my own actions. And part of those actions were to follow and support the direction of our Aurora Police Department. I've heard a lot of support for police enforcement and fire, except for when they make the right call, when they prioritize public safety and not extreme acts for a otherwise peaceful protest. Again, I do not condone the actions that happened related to the flag. Had other members of this council been in attendance, and had the media actually reported on the entirety of the event, they would have seen the full picture, which is on the completely other side of a parking lot, a, a driving bridge, a sidewalk, a landscape buffer, a whole nother street. And then on the other side of that sidewalk were we speaking about facts, documented facts, ICE internal audits, Inspector General reports, and if we can't face the facts, and again, that was more of the reason why we needed to have been there. I also want to say that I'm disappointed in the, the events and the folks who decided to take down the flag, because it, it not only was harmful, you know, in a symbolic way to our veterans, who I, I very much represent, I have the VA, and I, you know, we have a, a history in my ward and in Aurora with our relationship to the military. So I understand how that might be offensive, but I also understand that it was highly disrespectful and detracting of the larger point. And to the folks who actually did organize this event, who spent probably months trying to organize a peaceful protest and vigil, right? We sat on the floor and we held prayer candles to commemorate the lives that have been lost, and to, again, have a vigil for the well-being of the folks in this facility. So I'm disappointed that those people decided to prioritize whatever mission they had, instead of respecting and honoring the folks who organized the event, which, as you can see, shifted the narrative in a way that, again, was not honoring the impacted folks and the people who organized this event. And I think that is part of the, the disappointment in this sequence of events. And I think the tone has changed some since the beginning of this meeting, which, I don't know if it's for better or for worse, but I take complete offense that I am anything less than a patriot, because I am defending the values that I think this country represents, and that I acted in a manner that was inconsistent with that. And I don't have a military career to back me up, except that I was, I'm from this community, and I, I love my constituents, and yeah, I do have family members who have been in the military. I lived on a military base. I owe a lot to our military community. But had we actually cared about the truth and actually cared about people's connection and, and love for community as opposed to a political opportunity, maybe, maybe that would have been the conversation as opposed to the theatrics that occurred here earlier. Round of applause and all. So, um, thank you for letting me clarify.